For our remote policy, all votes will be done by roll call. I will call each member's name and they will see how they vote. For joining us. So Evelyn, just so that you know, I usually ask everyone to mute their microphones until you have something to say or you raise your hand, just because with all the people it can be distracting. Thank you. I want to welcome everybody. This is part one of our new school committee after successful town elections on Tuesday in both towns. Evelyn Avaya Isa is joining us tonight because she was sworn in with me this morning. And I must say, I have struggled all day with what to open our meeting with, considering what has been going on nationally and in our communities. And I settled on this. So this morning, I was sworn in with Evelyn at Acton, I mean at Boxborough Town Hall, not Acton Town Hall, at Boxborough Town Hall. And something that I have always taken for granted, I certainly was nervous about the election and I am felt to have been reelected. But the process of going and getting sworn in until this morning didn't really mean all that much to me. I showed up in my tee shirt and shorts and I was on my way to Idowild. And Evelyn excitedly texted me that her nieces were coming up from Connecticut to watch her get sworn in. And I was like, oh, my gosh, that's so exciting. And we showed up and Evelyn's whole family was there. I mean, her daughters were there, husband was there, the nieces were there, the auntie was there. And they were all dressed up. And it really struck me that I have not taken enough time to sort of really acknowledge how much privilege I've had to sit at this table and to have a voice. And I just, I'm really excited going forward that we are making space for some other voices. So what I wanted to, what I wanted to start this with, with this meeting is that I am absolutely 100% ready to listen. This is the first meeting of my second term on school committee. And as I said, I really welcome the space that we've made at our table to be a lot bigger. So that's what I'm going to start with. I know that there are other members of our committee that want to share things. And I'm going to ask most people to wait until Peter makes his comments. But I was asked by a lot of you, we're going to have an agenda meeting, an agenda item at this meeting with regards to our response as a school committee and what we want to say. And I know that Diane worked very hard with some MAS C leadership to come up with a statement that MAS C has put forward. And I know that she would like to read that. I'm not really sure, Peter, if you have a feeling, if you want to do your comment first and that can be shared then? Or if it makes sense for us as a committee to do that piece of it now and affirm our support for not behind a statement? But, but something has already been written and it didn't seem appropriate to sort of reinvent the wheel, given that MAS C has already put a lot of thought into putting forward a statement. So I don't know, Peter, do you think that it makes sense to do that as part of your comments? So everything is condensed into one sort of item? You're muted.
After that wonderful introduction, I had to break your momentum. So I'm going to defer to you. I was actually going to ask if you would mind if we took some of the superintendent update out of order? So that I could actually read my statement at the beginning of the meeting?
Yep, absolutely. So I think that makes sense. And so you can read your statement. Diane has the prepared statement from MAS C that we can decide if we'd like to take this as a vote as a school committee to follow. And that can all sort of be part of our, our, our welcome to everything. I've recognized Evelyn. I just want to make sure that everyone understands and knows that Kira Cook and Yevan Wang were also elected to the school committee on the Acton side. And he was reelected to school committee, so congratulations. So because of the out of orderness of what COVID-19 has done to both of our towns, Acton Town Meeting is going to occur after Boxborough Town Meeting. And Acton's Town Charter indicates that members are not sworn in until the end of town meeting. So their town meeting, given that it's going to be on until June 29th, means that the Acton members will not start till then, which means that we have this meeting and another to be raised with the presence of Paul Murphy and Maya M. Chen before they depart. And I just wanted to note that at our next meeting, we will recognize Michael Bowe's service, as well as that of Paul and Maya at their last meeting. So because of the out of orderness, everything just makes sense to do it this way. So I think I mentioned Acton Town Meeting will be June 29th. Boxborough Town Meeting will be June 22nd. And we will do public participation in the high school students representative update after this proceeding. So Peter, you may go ahead and share your.
So first, Tessa, thank you. You know, I just want to let you all know, I really struggled with what exactly to say during this meeting. And I've decided that rather than try and say something different, I want to come back to the message that we as district leaders decided to write together. This was a group and collaborative effort. And I think it really speaks from the heart of all of our leaders. So I'd actually just like to read that to make sure it gets repeated. As district leaders, the events of the last week have left many of us speechless at a time when we also recognize the need to have spoken. We watched as George Floyd, among the growing list of African Americans like Breonna Taylor and Ahmaud Arbery, were unjustly killed. We watched as individuals across America and other countries voiced their anger and frustration as they came together to protest. And we watched as peaceful protests that voiced anger and demanded justice turned into civil unrest, rage, violence, and destruction. Robert Tressen, ADL New England's Regional Director, shared the following message this week. Racism is foundational to our country's history. It taints the country's application of its laws, values, and ideals. It is used to decide who will be heard, who will be free, and who will be deserving of justice, education, of healthcare, of mercy, and most tragically, of life itself. We have seen its taint historically, and we have seen its taint today in the very institutions we turn to for justice and safety. Our courts, our police, our government institutions at every level. As a predominantly white leadership team, we cannot fully imagine the feelings of our black students, families, friends, and colleagues, many of whom are shouldering the impact of these losses in addition to a pandemic that is disproportionately impacting our communities of color. As educators, we do not condone violence and destruction, yet we stand firm in our support of the millions of people across our country and those within our community who believe that we all simply must be better. Watching the demonstrations unfold over the last few days, we cannot help but feel complicit as leaders of our schools, which are among our community's most prized institutions. We have had well documented incidents that have made members of our community of color feel less safe and supported in our schools. Some of our examples include a parent arrest at Miriam Elementary School earlier this year, an incident at RJ Gray last year involving a picture of a hooded Klansman with a swastika, and a high school incident two years ago where a student discovered a racist note in a textbook. Despite our best efforts and years of work at the district and school levels, we recognize that there is still much work ahead to ensure our schools feel safe and warm. It's our responsibility as educators and school leaders to challenge systems that privilege some while disadvantaging many others. We need to reflect and educate ourselves as leaders, staff, students, and as a community to ensure that our schools provide safe and inclusive space for everyone. Our schools, classrooms, and community are critical in addressing legacies of inequity and systemic racism. And the absence of trust with and by communities of color requires us to have a greater commitment and urgency around this work. Robert Tressen's message continued. We all must contribute to the effort to dismantle the thinking and systems that have institutionalized racism. Each of us can begin right now by taking a stand in our own communities, on social media platforms, and in daily conversations, and by supporting organizations engaged in this effort. Collectively, we must imagine a country, and I'll say, our community and schools, that is better, believe that it is attainable, and work together to create it. It is incredibly frustrating for us and our staff members to be apart from our students and one another during these historic and difficult times. We miss the opportunity to meet face to face with our students and families and process these events in meaningful ways, because these conversations simply make us all better. In the next few days, we will be providing families with resources to share with their children about racism and social justice. Our high school recently had a faculty meeting and virtual student conversations to share feelings and stand against issues of inequity, bias, and racism. And we are working with the Fostering Racial Justice Group to hold a community conversation about race that will provide anyone interested with an opportunity to come together for this same purpose. Frustratingly, we do not have all the answers, and the issues are more complex than we could write in a letter or speak at the beginning of a meeting. Yet despite the complexity of our times, we need to be moved beyond watching to acting. And we are more committed than ever to working collaboratively with our community, our students, staff, families, and community members to develop and implement strategies to address inequity, bias, hate, and racism. And that is from the entire leadership team to the Acton and Boxborough Regional School District. I do just want to add that, you know, I think our leadership team, the feeling, as I've talked to leaders across the district, you know, we know we are certainly far from perfect. And I think quite honestly, we all feel that there are times when we simply need to be better and continue to need to be better. That's something we are all deeply committed to. And we hope that we can partner with our community to continue to get better for the benefit of all of us, and in particular, our students and families. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Peter. I guess now seems as good a time as any. Diane, if you're ready and you'd like to read the statement from MAS C, that would be, this would be a good time.
Sure, thank you. So I am the, so, well, first of all, I just give you, just to give you a minute of background. MAS C divides up all the 351 school districts into divisions. There are nine divisions plus an urban division plus a minority caucus. And this letter, I am the chair of Division Two. And this letter was the, the idea of Mildred Lefebvre from Holyoke, who heads up the Minority Caucus. You can join the Minority Caucus Facebook page on Facebook. It's, you have to ask permission, but you're automatically granted access if you're a school committee member. So the 11, the 11 of us got together with the board and crafted this statement. And it's kind of hot off the presses. I'm not sure it's even been fully circulated yet. It goes here, I'll just read it to you. Statement of the MAS C, following the death of George Floyd. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees deplores the indefensible actions of the Minneapolis Police that resulted in the murder of George Floyd. We further call upon all of our national, state, and local leaders to recognize that Mr. Floyd's death and the demands of millions of Americans to respond must be addressed with not only swift and fair justice, but also with a national commitment to secure freedom from hate, bigotry, and social and economic injustice. As school leaders, we must look to those policies, practices, and procedures that often unintentionally produce inequitable outcomes for children at risk and adopt strong anti-racism policies, policy statements locally to show our commitment to identify, challenge, and change, I'm sorry, to show our commitment to identify, to challenge, and to change values, structures, and behaviors that can create systemic racism. We call upon our colleagues and constituents at every level of government and in every school district to use their positions as leaders, educators, and mentors to the current and future generations to speak out and use their classrooms, schools, and their voices as instruments for securing social and economic justice for our students, their families, and their communities, and their nation. We must move with purpose to ensure that we, as a people, act deliberately to demonstrate to all Americans that prejudice and hate will not be tolerated and will be challenged at every turn. Tessa, are you still with us? That's the entirety of the statement.
Tessa was having some internet connectivity issues prior to the meeting. So I see that, first of all, thank you, Diane, for your comments and supporting that through the MAS C. And I see that John has his hand up. So, John.
The challenge that we face is both local in Acton and Boxborough and global. One of the, you know, hardening things that occurred, you know, was the global response to the death of George Floyd. It was not simply a US response. And I know that viruses and racism respect no borders. So the response needs to be reflective, you know, of the systemic nature of the problem. And, you know, I've talked about, you know, different things that I would like to be part of our school committee meetings. And let me add another. Let us also in these meetings exemplify love. And, you know, people wonder about the use of emotion and expressions that we should have. But there can be, you know, no higher expression, you know, of our feelings than the love that we show for each other and the work we do.
Thank you, John. Ginny?
Thank you. I just, I appreciate all the statements. I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize the fact that so many of our kids, of our town people, have showed up for the last two days at Kelly's Corner. I think there was a protest slash demonstration the day before. And I drove by three times yesterday to the 27 and 111. And it was so awesome to see. It was, my understanding for my own kids, organized by kids, for kids. And, and, you know, for my, my girls, this was the first protest I've ever been to that I didn't brag them to. So they went on their own and I wasn't invited. And I'm really proud of all the students that A B who are not directly affected by this. And one, one quote that I, that I read that has stuck with me over the last week was that nothing's going to change until those of us who are not directly impacted by racism become as outraged as those of us who are. And I feel like this time, that might really be happening. So I just applaud our kids. They're wearing masks. They were standing far, kind of far apart. And I just congratulate them for, for standing up.
Thanks, Ginny. Okay, internet issue is resolved, hopefully, for the moment. Evelyn?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that that was a beautiful statement from Diane. And thanks to the district for sending out a statement. I was a little bit taken aback that I had not seen a statement. So it was a breath of fresh air when something came out. I think I can speak for the people of color in the community that what happened yesterday and today and the support that we get in the community shows that folks in this community are ready to make a change. And that we recognize that there's a problem. And I hope that we can carry that forward in whatever we do as a district, as a community, to make a change where everyone in this community is feeling welcome and heard and appreciated.
So I don't see anyone else with their hand up. Do we want to do voice support in the form of a vote of support for the MAS C statement? Diane, was that, is that the intention of?
It is the intention to have districts sign on to this, for sure.
So I am wondering if people are interested in doing that.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Paul? You're muted.
I'll, I'll move to support the statement from, as read by Diane.
Second.
Great, so there is no additional discussion. And Evelyn, this is how it will work. I'm going to call everybody's name. And of course, people are in two districts, so this is going to get complicated. But I, I will call everybody's name to, to vote individually, one by one. Ginny?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
And Diane? Did I already say Diane? Sorry, my thing is across two streets. Evelyn?
Yes.
And me, yes. So that, that is a unanimous vote in support of MAS C's statement. Okay, so this is the time in our meeting where we have public participation for some, for items that are not on the agenda. So if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak, you can use the raise hand feature. And we can elevate you, see if you can see. Don't see anybody, do you, Peter? Nope, okay. Then we will move on. Our, our high school representatives here?
If our high school representatives are here, I'd ask you to just raise your hand because we have a fairly long list of attendees, but I do not see them.
I don't, I don't see them either. And me? Brian?
Brian? Yep, so I'm gonna... And Mimi?
And Larry.
Wait a second. I don't know if Brian and Mimi are.
They're both ABSSAF leaders, so.
Got it.
The next agenda item.
Okay, perfect. Got it, okay. Then we'll keep Brian and Mimi.
All right, so they are high school representatives, but not the high school representatives that I was, that I was referring to. So seeing that we don't have our school committee, right? High school representatives present?
I do not see them, no.
Correct, okay. So then our first presentation is the annual donation from ABSSAF. So Marie, would you like to take it over?
I would, thank you, Tessa. I'm so pleased to have several representatives of the ABSSAF board with us here tonight to make an annual contribution, which is expensive, a $60,000 donation. So I'd like to introduce, we have Jim Kirkman, who is the president of ABSSAF. We have Brian O'Connor, who is the vice president. We have two students, we have Anya Mital and Sophie Zhang. So I'm really pleased to have them with us. And I'll turn it over to Jim.
Hi, can you hear me, Marie?
We can, Jim. We can't see, but we can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And I'm not sure why my wife's name is appearing. I must have signed in somewhere incorrectly. But thank you very much to the school committee for, for having us this evening. We're very glad to be here. This always, this meeting represents really the culmination of a year's worth of hard work in, in terms of raising funds for ABSSAF. So we've got two students, as Marie said, we've got Anya Mital and Sophie Zhang, who are going to talk a little bit tonight about the mission of ABSSAF and how we raise our, how we raise our funds. And you can see Claudine in the picture there with the, with the check. That'll be in the mail and you'll be able to, that, that won't go in the bank, but we'll get you a real one. And with that being said, Anya, are you here? If you, if so, I'll turn it over to you.
I can't find Anya. I'm trying to find her. Does anyone, Amy, are you here? Do you see her?
She's already here.
Okay, great, sorry. Oh, hi, Anya, I'm sorry.
Hi, so my name is Anya Mital. I am a rising sophomore, and this is my second year on ABSSAF. Before we get to the donation, I'd like to provide a brief background on ABSSAF, which was founded based on the belief that extracurricular activities are vital in developing well-rounded students and that they provide a way for students to feel connected to both their peers and the school. Members also believe that an entire community benefits when its youth are engaged in positive activities. Since its inception in 1981, ABSSAF has donated well over $1 million to the Acton-Boxborough Regional Schools. ABSSAF raises funds to help support athletic teams from the junior high to varsity, academic teams like the math, science, speech and debate, and academic decathlon team, and performing arts groups like fans, chorus, and theater, as well as community service at ABRHS and RJ Gray. Recent ABSSAF donations have helped purchase a new scoreboard for the upper gym and a new stage curtain for the high school. I'll now turn it over to my co-presenter Sophie Zhang to provide more details on how ABSSAF raises funds and to present this year's donation.
Hi, I'm Sophie Zhang. I'm a rising junior, and this is my first year on ABSSAF. This year, there were approximately 23 students and 23 adults on the ABSSAF board. Students and adults are asked to serve a two-year term. ABSSAF raises funds primarily through the sale of the ABSSAF pass, which provides families with free admission to most Acton-Boxborough home extracurricular activities during the current academic school year. ABSSAF pass holders are also entitled to two tickets to the RJ Gray musical and two tickets to a single performance of each of the high school's proscenium circus or PC mainstage productions. The other primary funding vehicle is the annual phone-a-thon, which is held over two evenings each fall. During this time, ABSSAF student board of members and students from ABRHS, call families in the school district and ask them if they'd like to purchase an ABSSAF pass or make a donation to ABSSAF. Over the years, ABSSAF has continuously benefited from the generous generosity of Acton and Boxborough residents. This year, ABSSAF is proud to be able to present the school committee with a $60,000 donation, which represents the funds raised during the 2019-2020 school year. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you all. Jim, do you have anything else? Or Brian?
We don't. Just thank you again for your, your time, time this evening. And we look forward to coming back next year and having a similar conversation.
Thank you so much. Hang on, we'll move to a vote. You can wait and have the school committee accept it. And also, we have Claudine Sage in here as well, also from the ABSSAF board. Great, so was there a motion to accept this generous donation?
Some moved.
Second.
To our roll call of votes. So Ginny?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
And me, yes, and somebody's dog, who is also happy and thankful that we are accepting such a generous donation. That passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Thank you, girls, for coming to give us such a great presentation. It's hard to be on do meetings like this and, you know, especially with, with everyone watching. So you really spoke eloquently about the mission of, of ABSSAF. And you really think you were coming tonight to present the check.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So Peter, you're, you're up next. So are, are we still doing school closure updates? Or is this just the retirees?
I just have a couple of quick things. But why don't we do retirees first, since they have been here and we're very excited about presenting?
Okay, sounds good. So you want me to say something about it, or you guys have whatever prepared?
Marie, did you want to, you were going to introduce, correct, Marie? And I'm going to promote people?
So we have never done this before, and I hope you bear with us. We're going to try to do this nicely, but also quickly. We have about a dozen of our retirees with us this evening, along with the principals from their schools. And we're really happy to be able to say a few brief words about them. Before we start, I want to show you that we do have this crystal paperweight with the ABC on it that we will, is going in the mail to each of our retirees. We normally would have a whole celebration and we would be handing them to them. But I just thought I would show everyone the crystal paperweight. So they'll be getting it in the mail. Their schools are doing virtual celebrations with them. And it's certainly a unique year. But we're going to start with Blanchard and Principal Dana Lab.
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. First of all, I just want to congratulate Tessa on her reappointment. And I want to congratulate Evelyn on her appointment to school committee. I very much look forward to working alongside with you. Okay, we have three retirees from Blanchard. Eileen Barnett first came to work at Blanchard in 1993 as a substitute teacher. In 1999, she accepted a part-time position and has been Blanchard's full-time visual arts teacher since 2003. Eileen is known for adorning the front office in fresh flowers every week and creating beautiful displays of artwork and student work in the front lobby and throughout the building. Eileen smiles on every. Elie smiles on everyone's faces and leaves the students brimming and bursting with pride. She has forged strong connections with her colleagues and she will be sorely missed. We hope that she will come back to Blanchard soon and roam the hallways in her roller skates. Kathy Daniel began working in the district um, at Miriam in two thousand and one. She had been the nurse at Blanchard since two thousand and one. Um, Kathy has been a valuable member of our safety team and always is willing to lend a helping hand. As an admitted hypochondriac, I am sure she will be relieved to not have to take my temperature on a weekly basis. I'm sure Kathy will spend, enjoy spending time gardening and reading in Maine. Finally, last but not least, Lauren Grady started her tenure at Blanchard in nineteen ninety-four as a substitute teacher and classroom assistant. She has been a uh, Blanchard classroom teacher since two thousand. Lauren has an infectious laugh, marvelous singing voice, and a wonderful taste in music. Lauren also throws the best porch parties in Boxboro and we hope we are still invited. If I know Lauren, she is very much looking forward to her time with her beloved family.
Aw. Thank you, Dana. Next in line, we have Conan with Damian Chagru. And we'll gradually bring people into the meeting and have people go back to being panelists.
And? Did we find? Let's see.
Damian was definitely here.
Oh, I know I'm uh, I apologize a little.
Oh, he did this.
We would like. I am having trouble.
Chagru and Heather McRae.
I think I can bring Heather up first. I'm having trouble finding Damian in the list.
He's here. He's already in.
I'm here.
Great. Okay, perfect. You said Heather's in?
Yep. Go ahead, Damian.
All right, it's a, it's a pleasure to honor Heather McRae, who has been the nurse at Conan for fifteen years. Um, she has become an institution at Conan, welcoming every student um, to the point where many students need to be turned away because they're just looking to visit, not to get medical attention because they love her so much. Um, we will certainly miss her, her medical advice, her sense of humor, her soft touch in difficult situations, and her supportive spirit as she moves on to retirement. And uh, we certainly hope she keeps in touch with us and we will miss her a great deal.
Thank you. Thank you, Damian.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Damian. Thank you, Heather. Next, we have Douglas and Chris Woodback. Along with Cheryl Breslin and Debbie Kelly.
Uh, Pelly, Debbie Pelly.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I knew that.
No, that's o- that's okay. Um, uh, Cheryl Breslin, there she is. Um, Cheryl started at uh, in Acton in September of nineteen ninety-seven as a counseling assistant at Miriam, and the following year was a classroom assistant. She became a classroom teacher, grade four, at Douglas in September of two thousand, after her completing her degree at Leslie College, where I had the pleasure of being one of her professors. Cheryl lives the Gandhi quote, "Be the change you wish to see in the world." Each year, she has taught children uh, not only to be responsible classroom citizens, but citizens of the world. Cheryl is a masterful teacher and her jolly ranchers, as she calls her students, will remember her fondly. Thank you, Cheryl. Uh, Debbie Pelly started in September of nineteen ninety-five as a classroom assistant at Miriam as well. She moved to Douglas as a special education assistant in August nineteen ninety-nine, became a kindergarten teacher in oh seven, oh eight, and then moved to the classroom teacher, grade two, in oh eight, oh nine. Debbie has quietly guided second graders through meaningful investigations and learning experiences. Together, they built totem poles, explored trees, recycled newspapers, or planted butterfly gardens and raised butterflies. Every day, Debbie was thinking about new ways to teach her students. Debbie often started sentences with, "I read this book yesterday and we should think about." In her own gentle way, she shaped Douglas School and we're better off for having worked with her. Thank you very much, Debbie.
Thank you, Douglas. Next, we have the high school with Larry Dory, Lisa Dayhill, and Bill Knoweth. Larry?
Yeah, I'm I'm just checking. Are we all in, Peter? Let's see, I see my friend Lisa Dayhill and where is my friend Bill Knoweth?
He's on his way in.
Okay. Lisa Dayhill uh, started at the high school in two thousand thirteen. She came to us from Lexington, um, I believe. She was one of the best people we've ever, we've ever stolen. Uh, at at Lexington, she worked with the um, what's called their directed intensive learning program for students with social and cognitive challenges. Lisa uh, provided a um, a program, a home support to students that um, we weren't, in my opinion, um, providing um, what they needed. She is uh, one of the most caring and just simply smart people when it comes to working with with um, young adults, and I thank her dearly and and appreciate everything she's given to us. Bill Knoweth is one of my best friends. Um, he's been at the school for forty-three years. When I started twenty-seven years ago, I never thought I would say he was one of my best friends, but um, he's an amazing, he he's an amazing individual. He he has been able to reach all different types of learners. Um, he has helped me grow and learn more than any educator I've 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 ever worked with, and he supported me from the very beginning in 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 my role as a, as a leader in the building. Um, Bill will still be around and I'm grateful for that, but um, I want him to know how important he's been to me. Thank you both.
Thank you very much, Larry. Next, we have Gates with Lynn Newman, Nancy May, and Priscilla Kotick.
Great, is everybody, everybody's there? Yeah? Okay, so I'm going to start with Nancy. Um, and it's really my honor to be speaking on behalf of all three of our amazing Gates retirees. So Nancy May joined the Gates staff in two thousand and three and has taught fourth grade for eight years and third grade for the past nine years. Nancy's devotion to all her students and her commitment to providing them with a strong academic foundation are well-known by parents and colleagues. What Nancy's students will remember most about Mrs. May are the many memorable experiences such as the Wax Museum and the Third Grade Opera. All of these allowed each student to feel very special and to shine. So thank you so much, Nancy. Thank you so much. Um, we have, I'm thinking, do we have Johanna? I'm gonna um, go with Priscilla next. Is Priscilla?
Priscilla's here. Johanna could not make it tonight.
Okay, um, so I think actually, um, so Priscilla, Priscilla Kotick. Uh, Priscilla Kotick's career began in special education in Maine and New York in nineteen seventy-six. She joined the Acton-Boxboro Regional School District in nineteen ninety-four, working as a technology integration specialist, and later became the director of instructional technology. For the past ten years, Priscilla has been the Gates Assistant Principal, an inspirational leader, a thoughtful educator, respectful colleague, loyal friend, and most recently, the loving grandmother to her new sweet granddaughter, Leila. Um, Priscilla, you will be missed, or as I say, Mrs. Dr. Kotick, you will be missed. And I would all, also like to speak on behalf of Johanna Pyle. Uh, Johanna Pyle is a dedicated educator who has worked in the field for thirty-eight years. In nineteen ninety-four, Johanna began her career in A B, working as a special educator in the integrated preschool for fourteen years, and for the past twelve years, Johanna has worked at the Gates School as a special educator in our resource room. Johanna will be sorely missed for her passion, devotion, and commitment to the students she has served and with the teachers for whom she has worked with. So I want to congratulate all three of you. Um, you are amazing and we wish you nothing but the best on your upcoming retirement. So thank you.
Thank you, Gates. Next, we have Community Education Extended Day. We have Kate Murray on behalf of Leslie Morgan.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm honored to he- to be here and speak about Leslie. She started in the district in two thousand nine um, as a head teacher, and I've had the pleasure of working with her for the past five years. She's been the head teacher in the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade classroom, which is a very tricky age, since typically those kids don't think they need extended day. Um, Leslie brought so much to the position. Not only did she bring compassion and devotion to her kids, but she brought an amount, an amount of professionalism that was unmatched. It was during this time after school each day when kids let their guard down and they share so much of themselves and they shared it with Leslie. She made special connections with all of her kids, and I know each one of them will never forget the shoulder she provided for them when they needed it most. She'll be dearly missed, especially by me. I don't know what I'm gonna do when she's not here to tell me what's going on with with those kids. And I know she's gonna go off into the sunset and play with her five grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate and Leslie. Next, we have Miriam with Juliana Schneider, Mar- and Martha Sheridan.
Thank you, Marie. It's a pleasure to be here to speak. Um, I know Martha is here. I don't think Betty is joining us this evening, but I will begin with Martha. Martha has been teaching, Martha began teaching at Miriam School seventeen years ago and truly embodies what it means to be a lifelong learner. Not only has Martha nurtured and challenged so many Miriam students throughout her years, she has always helped her colleagues to look at each situation with a new lens. Her medical lens, parent lens, equity lens, environmental lens, teacher lens, for the purpose of what is best for children. Martha thinks she's retiring, but really, we're only giving her the summer off before we bring her back in new and different roles. Thanks. Thank you, Martha. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And next, um, Nurse Betty was not able to be here this evening, but Nurse Betty has been taking care of me, of Miriam students for twenty years, being the only remaining teacher who started in the old Miriam building, which is now the admin building. Her incredible dedication and love has been felt by all Miriam families and the many different ways she's cared for all of us. Bruises, scrapes, tears, we often joke that there's something magic in her ice. We wish her all the best with Lakeside Living in New Hampshire.
Thank you, Juliana.
Thank you.
Last but not least, we have the junior high. We have Andrew Shen and Lisa Owen. And the two people who could not be here are Lynn Kandraki and Boo Barry. Go ahead, Andrew.
Hi, is Lisa on? She won't see her yet. While we're waiting for her, I'd like to, I'd like to thank uh, Dana Lab for putting on a suit and tie, making the rest of us look bad. I appreciate that. So I feel the obligation to let everyone know I got a haircut this afternoon, just just for all of you. Thank you, Dana.
I did not see Lisa. I thought I saw her earlier.
I don't see her yet, so we can.
If Lisa is there, could she raise her hand? It might be under one of the other names.
I'm almost sure I saw her earlier.
Why don't I read the the ones that who aren't able to come and then hopefully give a little time for Lisa to show up? So uh, we have two retirees who are unable to join us today, Lynn Kandraki and uh, Robert Barry. Lynn Kandraki has been at A B for eighteen years, starting as an assistant and the last twelve as a seventh grade math teacher at R J Gray. From the beginning, Lynn has been at the forefront of incorporating technology into the classroom and has served as a resource and guide to her colleagues. Having Lynn as a resource these past few months, I think it goes without saying, has been invaluable for us. She and her avatar will be sorely missed. So thank you, Lynn, uh, for everything you've done. Uh, Robert Barry, also more affectionately known as Boo Barry, uh, has been a custom custodian in A B for twenty-five years, most recently as part of the day shift at R J Gray. He's partnered with many custodians over the years to ensure that the facility is ready for students and staff each day. He's actually gonna be with us until mid-July, so we actually, a few of us look forward to the chance to say farewell in person, uh, of course, in a socially distant manner. Um, but we'll miss Boo, uh, so we're looking forward to seeing him in person uh, when we're back in in the school uh, in a couple of weeks. With that, is Lisa, is Lisa back?
I don't see her, but why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Uh, Lisa Owen has been a teaching assistant at R J Gray for the past thirteen years, supporting several teams and special educators during her time at R J Gray. She's also well-known within the district for her role as a long-term coach for both the cross-country and track programs at the high school. Uh, for me, she actually arrives at school right around the same time that I'm walking back into uh, the school building from uh, morning traffic duty. So we often have a few moments together uh, each morning, and it's always kind of a highlight of the day just before everything gets busy. So uh, for me personally, that's gonna be something I'll miss. But on behalf of the whole school, we're certainly going to miss uh, Lisa as well. So congratulations to all three of those retirees. Uh, and we wish them um, a great future uh, in terms of their other endeavors.
Thank you, Andrew. So we had a total of twenty-four retirees over the last eight to ten months. About fifteen of them are this June, and twelve of them were able to join us tonight. Those twelve alone represent more than three hundred years of teaching experience. And almost half of that was Bill Knoweth, but it's really remarkable. Sorry, I had to get one in. Um, but thanks to all of you for um, having us do this and honoring these amazing educators as as they retire from really astounding careers.
Well, certainly a different way to to honor them, but I guess with everything else, this will become a a special memory, uh, even if it wasn't the memory that they anticipated. Um, thank you to all of those teachers and custodians and other staff that have worked so hard in our district. So Noah's has been at the high school since I went back. So there, there you go. Um, and Dawn too. I mean, not Dawn has been at the high school since then. I mean, she's always there with you. So. All right, so Peter, would you like to give your school closure update now?
Yeah, sure. Um, I'm gonna start off by talking about, you know, another group of people who are leaving us um, in a way that's a little bit different than expected. Um, and I actually wanted to give you a little bit of update on our graduation parade and make sure that you know you're all invited um, to come tomorrow around four forty-five P M. And help all of uh, the class of twenty twenty celebrate their commencement in a bit of a non-traditional way. So tomorrow, uh, beginning around four forty-five P M, we'll be kicking off our first ever rolling rally to celebrate the class of twenty twenty. Uh, the rally will begin at the Boxboro Regency. Um, so, and then it's going to proceed along Route one eleven to the entrance of R J Gray. Rally will then be proceeding to the high school where our graduates will receive their diplomas. Um, I know that this has not been the semester that our seniors expected to have, uh, while they closed out their time with us, but we do want to help them celebrate as a community. So for school committee members, if you are interested in viewing the rolling rally, please know that you are welcome to join us, um, either in front of the high school where the high school faculty will be gathering. And then we are also inviting our community members who would like to view that rolling rally to participate along Route one eleven. We do ask that everyone does so in a socially distant manner and wear their masks as well. Um, just to celebrate the new reality that we all have. But again, it's tomorrow, beginning at four forty-five is kickoff out of the Boxboro Regency, but we would love to see as many faces as possible helping to celebrate um, our seniors as they depart. So I just want to end that section by thanking all of the organizations who helped support um, this, you know, transition to a different version of graduation. This was an incredible amount of work. So to both of the health departments in the towns for helping us to make sure our plans were safe, to the town administrators and their staff and helping us. They helped us make sure banners got hung up celebrating our graduates, to the elected officials, including you and our town officials as well. Um, and our high school administration staff did an incredible job with this, but I particularly want to thank our P T S O and Project Graduation because as community partners, they were absolutely incredible to work with in every step of the way. We are so gonna miss the class of twenty twenty. I wish that it might be a traditional graduation. Uh, but I continue to believe that for years, this graduating class will look back and remember their high school graduation probably more than any other high school graduating class uh, in history. So congratulations, graduates. I hope you can join us tomorrow as we kick them off. Well, not really kick them off our property, but you know, kick off the, kick off the next phase of their lives. Not kick them out. Last one that I have is very, very quick. You know, I had updated you at a prior meeting, I think it was the last meeting, when I gave you an overview of the process that we're using to plan for reopening. I just want to let you know, all of our committees have now started meeting, and we've kicked off that process officially. We had our first steering committee last week, and we had another one this week. And then, all of our working groups are now up and running with membership. We are so thrilled that we have some school committee members involved in that process, but also thrilled that we have members from the ADEA as well in the process. And then, we're gonna be reaching out to a whole bunch of stakeholders throughout the planning process to make sure that we get a lot of community voice and are well-represented in the process. So, that was it for me.
Thank you. Okay, so, new business. We have votes planned for revisions to four of our policies tonight as well as new procedures, new procedures to look at for how we select our school committee chairperson and vice chairs for the new school year. Amy, would you like to do, I could be present, the four type of votes on the policy? So, I'll let you present however you want to present them, and if you want to do one by one, you can do that.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you as a parent of a senior. This is not the year that we thought it would be, but it has turned into be something really special, so thank you very much for everybody. I know they've done a lot of work. So, the first policy that we have to look at is the graduation requirements. So, we had postponed that. This will actually be a third read, and Diane, did you want to say something about that? I know you had a question.
Yeah, so I was reading over the minutes from the policy subcommittee meeting on May fourteen. So, just to refresh your memories briefly, I had added some of the tenets directly from the MassCor site. The first one that is still in the policy, we have it tonight, is an encouragement for the schools, the junior high specifically, and the high school to create a broad range of courses and interests and engage students. That's right from MassCor. The other two tenets were MassCor tenets that you set, that's kind of a directive, to set ambitious goals to increase student participation in AP courses, especially students from historically underserved groups, and to address implicit bias and stereotypes about who is taking these advanced coursework, this advanced coursework. So, those were dropped, and so I was reading over the minutes, and there was one sentence that struck me that administrators agreed they did not want to emphasize increasing student participation as a result of this policy. And looking back on Larry Dory's memo, ninety-seven percent of students apparently are already taking like three years of math, so this only applies to three percent. I'm just wondering, I understand why the scale back from the MassCor tenets. I don't want to impose wholesale and make assumptions about, you know, dropping wholesale into schools initiative that we're not quite ready for. It doesn't mean that we won't in the future for sure. I understand that, but I want to understand in more detail. We are increasing student participation in this policy. It might just be incremental, just three percent. I don't know how many students that is, but who is already, who is the ninety-seven percent, and who is the three percent? And how will they be supported in this additional requirement that's pretty substantial if you look at it? And I support the policy. I just wanted to ask the question.
I can take this. It's Marie.
Okay.
I'm not sure if the minutes, if they were exactly what you said. They're missing a couple of words because the point was specifically to not emphasize increasing participation in AP, which is what the MassCor tenet was. So, we felt that we didn't think that the school committee policy should put such an emphasis on increasing participation in AP. So, that was why we took it out, not increasing participation in coursework by any means.
Yeah, so the preceding sentence does say that that reference to MassCor program provides a helpful resource to why the district decides on requirements that they do. Subcommittee members decided against including the mention of AP classes. And then, it goes on to read administrators agree they didn't want to emphasize increasing student participation in this policy. Okay, so that pertains specifically to the AP courses and not just generally? Okay, and so, how will the three percent be supported generally in this additional requirement?
So, I think in the reference of the three percent when we were talking, there's a couple of different percentages. The three percent of students for whom the policy there might be waivers for, I think that's the piece. When we were talking about having some students who might be moving into our district, the sophomore junior year and the word language requirement, especially if they're learning English, that we may waive that requirement. So, there might be some specifics for waiving around the three percent of student population for whom the requirements may not align for one reason or another.
Okay, and this ninety-seven percent included kids on IEPs, kids with disabilities?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So...
You want me to? Go ahead, Tessa.
No, I was just gonna say, yeah, go ahead. Keep going.
Uh, okay, so Paul, you had something?
Yeah, so I had asked this question a couple of readings ago because I was very concerned about the three percent. But I remember hearing the answer that the effort would be for engagement and options that would actually bring them in. And that's why I've been supportive of the change. Correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, that's how I understand it.
So, there's a percentage of students for whom, and I think Peter had alluded to this earlier, and specifically, so for example, in the sciences or math, for whom, you know, it's Algebra One Part One and then the next year Algebra One Part Two, and not really having a diversity of choices for students after that, and to be able to have more choices in mathematics or other subject areas. And so, there is a percentage of students for whom we need to create other kinds of diverse courses. However, there is also a three percent of students for whom we're going to have to waive the requirements for those other reasons I just mentioned. So, it's actually serving some dual purposes.
Angie?
Yeah, I have two questions. The first one is, so, just to clarify, we don't... Sorry, I didn't see it in the policy that we would put in the policy that we don't anticipate an increase? Is that part of the policy?
Increase in what?
Increase in Latin.
Participation, the previous that Marie was talking about.
So, we took out that our emphasis is on increase in participation in APs only. That's not our goal, is to just increase participation in APs. Our goal is to have choices for our students to participate in courses that meet a range of interests and passions and meet our requirement.
So, we don't have to set a limit in terms of anything. That's kind of my first comment. My second comment is because of this virtual classroom situation right now, so my general question is, will this be possible include any kind of virtual class in the future that we may develop in the future as far as that will be able to meet the requirements?
I can jump in.
It takes effect, yeah.
I think it's probably too early to speculate about what we would want to do virtually versus in person. I think, you know, there's certainly gonna be elements of the closure and what we've learned from the closure that we'll bring into school, but I think it's probably too early for us to figure out if we're thinking about offering virtual classes rather than in person.
What, can I have a follow-up?
That question in particular really doesn't pertain to whether or not we want to change our graduation requirement, which is what the policy is about. So, if your question pertains to something that you need clarification on this policy, then yes, you can have a follow-up, but otherwise, I think we need to vote. It's the third time we've looked at the policy, and it's not about what courses we may offer in the future and everything else. It really is just...
So, I just want to make sure that if that will be developed in the future and this policy still will be okay with that situation.
So, this takes effect at the class of 2025. Those are our current seventh grade students, and I'm hoping between maybe the next couple of years, we're going to get better and better in terms of our distance learning. And so, I think all of those different things coming together, but we're always striving to improve what we can.
Right, I understand. So, let's also make sure this policy, if that will happen in the future and students taking the virtual classroom will still be able to meet the requirement.
Andy, any course we offered would need our own requirement for coursework, so we can cover that. So, Amy, do you want to vote them like after we discuss each one?
No, actually, Tessa, if we could vote this one, and then I wanted to go into use of facilities and policy development, and then save the reorganization procedures policy for last, but I think Diane still has one comment about this one.
I wanted to just express my appreciation to Tessa in particular for holding the policy on my behalf to this meeting. And I also just want to make it clear that I am thrilled to see the engagement piece in there. It frames the whole thing for me in a driving kind of principle that I think we all can get behind. And so, with that, I would like to move that we approve graduation requirements policy IKF.
Second.
There is no more discussion than... And your hands not raised again, is it?
Oh, no.
Just making sure. Okay. Paul?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
Evelyn?
I don't know much about this policy.
No, you may. So, Evelyn, you may abstain if you would like to...
Yes, I'd like to abstain since I haven't had a chance to really look at this policy.
That's fine. All right, and I vote yes. So, did you get all that, Beth? Beth, okay, great. Amy, go ahead.
Okay, so the next policy is use of facilities, and if you remember, we had a first read last meeting, and the only change was that the Friends of Lower Field are no longer on that policy. They're no longer running, helping to run that field. So, we're looking for a vote. I didn't get any comments on it.
I move to approve use of facilities policy IKF.
Second.
All right, I'll go through again. Evelyn, feel free to abstain on this one as well. John?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Abstain.
Adam?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
And me, yes. People keep moving around on my screen, so that's why I'm going in different order. I apologize. So, Beth, that was unanimous with the exception of Evelyn Hooking. Go ahead, Amy.
Okay, the next one is policy development. We talked about it last time, and I did not receive any feedback. It's up for a second read. The votes, please.
I'll move to approve school committee policy development.
Second.
Adam moved and Paul seconded. Nora?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Evelyn?
I'll say yes.
Great. John?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
And myself. That is unanimous. Okay, and so, all right, Amy, you want to talk about the organizational meeting?
Yeah, so, the reorganizational meeting is up for a second read. And since our last meeting, we had a, we developed some procedures. And if you look in your packet, there are the first list of procedures is what the policy subcommittee came up with, and then you'll see the very next page. There are, the procedures have changed a bit because we incorporated comments that I got from Adam and the comments I got from John. So, I would say that, I just wanted to share with you what the policy subcommittee came up with first, and then to say that we incorporated those, and so I think I would like to speak through the second procedure. Normally, we do not vote on procedures because procedures are not in our purview. We develop policy in the use of administration or other entities that implement the procedures. But in this particular case, we actually, this is our policy and these would be our procedures. So, I would put forth that I think we should go ahead and vote on both.
So, does anyone, this is the, well, this is the first time people have been looking at the procedures. So, Angie, I hear your hand up. Would you like to ask a question or share some thoughts?
Yeah, I just have a question that I noticed that the second, after nomination, the second is not needed. I kind of want to hear the subcommittee, the philosophy after that.
So, if you go a little bit further down after the second one, you Roger, Roberts Rules, and in Roberts Rules, it says when you nominate, a second is not needed. So, we just took it directly from that.
Okay.
Nominations are apparently different from other things. I've looked at the Roberts Rules as well, and nominations are separate in that they do not require a second. So, that is the reason that people can be nominating themselves, and it just really is a different, it's a different procedure than other things that we do as a school. Adam, what would you like to share?
Yeah. First of all, thank you to the subcommittee for putting together these procedures. They're very helpful. And I do like all of the changes that were added in the second version. I guess my question is about timing, and if we are gonna vote on these procedures, do we feel like we need to have a first and second read of the procedures like we do for a policy? And do we have the time to do that before we're actually required to reorganize?
So, we're not going to reorganize until after Act in Town meeting, which is what, June twenty-sixth, twenty-ninth? Okay, so the first time we would be able to reorganize would be in August. I don't see any...
No, 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 no.
Oh, sorry, July, sorry.
July first is when our reorganization will be...
Sorry, July first. So, I don't see a problem in doing a second read on the procedures if that's what the committee feels. I'm happy to do it tonight or wait for a second read too.
Paul, were you gonna ask the same thing?
Yeah, I was gonna ask about timing.
So, my feeling about whether or not we do a second read is if there's anyone that has actual concerns about what is presented here. I think second reads are important when there's a lot of discussion around things that might need to be changed, but if people feel that this is representative of how we would like to move forward, I mean, we did have discussion ahead of the procedures being sort of drafted, just kind of talking casually about, you know, what this may look like in terms of reorganization. And it's not, there are many things, other than the fact that there's a ballot vote, it isn't entirely different from what's been done in the past, but nothing is written down. So, Diane?
So, two people have now been confused about the August first thing, and that was put in just to build in a buffer zone for the outgoing chair and the incoming chair to have some mentorship and just some time to get it to speed instead of just being thrown into the roll suddenly. I wasn't under the impression that the other, when we do restructure and we volunteer for the various subcommittees and all that gets done, what is the time? gets done, what, what is the timing for that, and could that be clarified in the policy? Just a suggestion.
So that wasn't given as the purview of what, we don't usually do that in the reorganizational meeting, so my recollection is that, and I don't know if there's policy or procedure around that, is that the organization of subcommittees isn't done until the fall, when we start up again.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that it would fit in this policy. I feel like if that's, if that's something that you feel is important to be addressed, then we should go and do that separately. I don't think it belongs in this policy.
Well, because those things are the discretion of the chair, and if this is about choosing the chair, then I agree that it doesn't necessarily, like, the chair would need some time and people would need, like, that's why my understanding was that we don't do it at the same time as the, you know, people start their school year and they, they think about what kind of time commitment they may be able to make, and that I would imagine will be especially important this year as we have uncertainty about what everyone's policy actually wants.
Well, especially because the, this is our first meeting that we have new members, so how can we ask new members to come on and immediately decide that they want to commit to a subcommittee this quickly? I don't, I don't think that would be.
And I'm not suggesting we do, I just want to eliminate confusion.
And the other first change was a really good one, for lots and lots and lots of reasons. I think that, you know, it's going to certainly be a shortened time, there between the end of this subcommittee's tenure, sort of, and the beginning of the next, if you look at that as, as whatever workshop or meeting we have on this, but, so what do people think? Do we have consensus that we want to look at this again, or do we, John, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I wanted to say a couple of things. One is, I really applaud, you know, the initiative that Amy and the policy subcommittee took to create a procedure so that something was a little murky can be fully transparent. And then secondly, just as a parliamentary issue, because, you know, we have in our policy that Roberts Rules of Order dominate in, in any area where we're not going to do exactly what Roberts Rules stipulates, it's super helpful for us to have voted the policy so it's clear, you know, that we have explicitly changed the policy and there's no question about, you know, us being in compliance. And then lastly, you know, I appreciate, you know, Amy providing me with the opportunity to provide my feedback on this, you know, prior to the meeting. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm good to vote.
Adam, did you have your hand raised again?
Yeah, I did. I just, I, I was looking for a point of clarification on the page twelve in the packet, so the, the red line version of the procedures, where the asterisk talks about a majority vote. I think it may actually be more confusing to talk about a majority of those voting as opposed to the weighted votes that we have, which we talked about up top. I'm not sure if that language is clear to say a majority of the vote means that more than half of those voting approve a motion, because you could have half the people voting, but their weighted votes may not equal a majority.
Well, I think, I, I agree. This was, this was confusing to me, and, and Beth and I had a long conversation about it. I think that, so the, the idea of the majority vote and the, the majority weighted vote is that it's not just the number, if there were three people contending for one position, then it's not the person that gets the most votes, it's the person that gets over fifty percent of the votes, weighted votes, and they're all weighted, for, of the people that actually participate in the vote. So you could have school committee members that decide to abstain, and they don't want to vote, in which case we would go down from eleven voices to ten voices or nine voices, and that would be the majority of that weighted vote.
Yeah, I think just the, the term.
Go ahead.
On the term of those voting, I think we should, we should change to the weighted vote, because, again, if, if I'm, if I choose to abstain, then that's only one vote versus someone who is an active member who's got the three or three and a half votes, or whatever the ratio is. I think that's where it's confusing, is that the.
Two and a half.
Seventeen votes, whatever you, whatever the, the active members get, but that's, that's the part that's confusing to me, is that it's not a majority of those who vote, it's a majority of the weighted votes applied to those who voted.
Yes.
Marie, did you have a mind?
I can't hear you.
Yeah. Can you hear me now? Yeah. Sorry, I think Adam's right, we need to add the words of the weighted votes of those voting.
You got that, Beth? I agree.
Yeah, I agree, too. It's, it's confusing with the weighted votes, but I think anywhere that, I mean, it's confusing with how we'd have to vote in general, so anywhere that we can put in and clarify that it's a weighted vote, I think it is a good thing to do. Let's get on. Okay. Beth, Beth says she agrees, and she's all right. Okay, so if we, so do we want to vote on this? Just, just nod your head for me. You want to vote on it tonight? Okay, so that's, that's a majority of everybody except for Angie does not want to vote on it tonight. So I don't really see, Angie, is there, is there something that, that could be changed that would cause you to want to vote on it tonight?
Well, I just feel because there's new members tonight, and this is the first read, and we have one more meeting, there's opportunities, so I just would like to see.
Evelyn, how do you feel about that? Would you like more time to consider this?
Um, that wouldn't be a bad idea. I, I really don't know much about it, so, but, you know, if we're going to go, I probably will abstain anyway. Beautiful look at it when you get out.
Well, so this, this is the most important thing that, that we do. One of the most important things that we do as a committee is, is vote our, our leadership, so it's fine, we can wait for the next meeting. The next meeting is much heavier than this meeting, there's a lot more on the agenda, so if we decide to wait, we have an extended discussion at the next. Well, I don't want to vote, I don't want to push anyone into a vote, it's just that if there's not, if there's not a lot more discussion about it, then I think it's appropriate to vote.
I didn't realize the next meeting was so heavy. I, I think that if we can get this done tonight, it would be great. If you guys don't, if you don't want to, that's okay, but I, I do think that the more we can get done before the next meeting is.
It works.
I agree. I mean, given that, given that there aren't significant, I mean, we, most of this was laid out by Roberts Rules. It's not like there was a lot of, you know, creative expression on the part of the policy subcommittee in coming up with this, huge right from handbook that, that we use regularly. So I, I'm going to make the decision that, that we're going to vote it tonight. Evelyn, if you wish to abstain, that's absolutely fine, it's not a big deal. So I will take, we have to vote the same separately, though. So we have to vote the policy that we looked at last time that is actually a second read, right?
Yes.
And then, and then the procedures. So I will take the motion for.
Normally, we don't vote procedures, but I, in this particular case, I would argue that we should.
No, I agree that we should. So let's, let's vote the policy first. So I will take a motion.
Move to approve the school committee annual organizational meeting policy BBA.
Second.
Angie?
We're voting the policy, right?
We're voting the policy, yes. Well, you said yes?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
Evelyn?
I'll abstain.
Okay, and me, yes. Okay, so that was Beth, that was all yeses with the exception of Evelyn's abstentions. And now I will take the motion to approve this.
I'll move to approve the school committee annual organizational meeting procedures, dated six four twenty twenty, file BBA dash R.
Second.
Angie?
I'll abstain from this because I feel like, yeah, I abstain.
Amy?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Paul? Paul?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. John?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Vinnie?
Yes.
Evelyn?
I'll abstain with a caveat that I'm not off the street with it yet.
Okay. And me, yes. So Beth, that was two abstentions from Angie and Evelyn, and the rest were yes. Okay, thank you for all of that work, Amy, and the policy subcommittee. We appreciate.
Committee, seriously, yeah. Thank you.
Really appreciate that. Okay. So the plan is then that the, we will, we will reorganize on July first, which is the meeting after the active members have been sworn in. So they've already been elected, but when they are sworn in. Okay, so online business, in your packet, we have minutes of the meeting on May twenty first that we need to approve tonight.
Move to approve the Acton Boxboro Regional School Committee meeting minutes of May twenty first, twenty twenty.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Angie? You're muted.
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Diane, I'm abstaining. Vinnie?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
And me, yes. Okay, so that was unanimous, except an extension from Diane. Okay, so Peter, we have the Edco Collaborative Financial Update, item five point two on the agenda. You're muted.
Thank you. So as everyone knows, I've been updating you over the last several months about the financial status of Edco. Last meeting, we had a good conversation. I know maybe Nextron was in attendance as well, and at the end of the meeting, we were requested that we come back to you at this meeting and get an understanding of the committee's desire to either remain members of the Edco Collaborative or to choose to withdraw as members of the Edco Collaborative, and an additional option could be to consider a termination of the Edco Collaborative. There's a lengthy memo in your packet for that extent, just providing an overview of different points of view as to the issue. I also, in that memo, chose to summarize the position of several other member districts where we did know their status. I just want to update that now. We did have a board of directors meeting today, and at the board of directors meeting, Lexington withdrew their motion to initiate termination proceedings. They are still continuing to withdraw from the collaborative, but they have withdrawn their motion to terminate the organization, so that was not up for consideration. There was no other member district that chose to initiate termination proceedings. In addition, Concord and Concord Carlisle, just so you know, if you're new, that is actually the same district, same superintendent, but because technically two districts like we used to be, they get different votes, but Concord Carlisle and Concord did not move to initiate termination proceedings either at this meeting. The superintendent there also indicated that they had chosen to initiate a withdrawal process simply so that over the next year, they could watch the financial status of Edco and then make a decision as the year progresses next year. However, if the collaborative is in good financial standing, they are likely to continue as members of Edco. So with that, you know, that's a pretty significant update, but Belmont, you know, just to summarize the memo, did decide to continue as members, and they did rescind their votes. Additionally, Newton affirmed that they were continuing as members as, and that was, actually, the rest is, the rest is in the memo. You know, I have talked to a few superintendents. Some districts felt very strongly that Edco was a strong organization, it has been in existence fifty years, provides great services to a variety of communities and students across the state, and wanted to make sure that they affirm their belief in Edco and the strength of the organization. And there were some other districts that also indicated that it may not have been of direct use to them. They may not have placed students in the collaborative, or they may not be taking advantage of professional development offerings. However, they chose to remain in the collaborative because withdrawal would remove their voice in having a seat at the table. And so it was much more pragmatic view that if the organization, you know, was struggling financially, they would rather have a vote at the table about how that gets turned around, rather than have the liability carry with them long term, but lose their seat at the table and a voice. So I'll be honest with you, my own personal take on this and recommendation would be to remain members of the Edco Collaborative for both reasons, philosophical, that I do believe in the organization, the strength of the organization, and also from a pragmatic standpoint, that, you know, for fourteen thousand dollars a year in terms of our assessment, that's, it would be much more beneficial to the district to turn Edco around and have a seat at the table in that process than to leave and have, you know, several hundred thousand dollar liability that could potentially follow us into the future. So I think, you know, either way you look at it, I think it's probably more beneficial to stay members, but, you know, quite honestly, I've seen the budget for FY twenty one, as has Dave, they're actually, we just passed today the budget for FY twenty one, which does show a variance of over two hundred thousand dollars to the good, with the intention of rebuilding the reserves of the collaborative first, and then having the process to pay down liabilities after that. But just like personal finance, you have to have your own safety net first, which is their reserves, and then begin a process of paying off liabilities. It's the strategy made sense to the board today, and I would, you know, recommend that you continue to participate in the collaborative. However, I did provide you a variety of options and outcomes that you could consider along with some possible vote language, should you want to make a motion.
John?
Uh, yeah, Peter, the other thing that maybe bears on the decision about what to do would be your sense of the strength of Edco's current leadership. So I take it from your recommendation, a part of that is that you do believe that the current leadership group can rebuild the organization. Is that correct?
I do. Yeah, I, I, I've thought long and hard about that, and I, I really do think Nadine is coming in and trying to provide the right direction. She's also proposing to work with one of the former executive directors, who actually does some strategic planning to develop kind of a new brand and strategic plan for the collaborative and moving forward. So I do believe in the model that they're setting forward, and I think it will be a strong organization.
Diane?
So did you still have a question, Diane? Sorry, you're muted. Sorry, I just forgot to unmute myself, sorry. I saw, so last, last meeting, I, I think I, it was probably on the twenty first, but I watched it on ACTON TV. You had mentioned there was a twenty thousand dollar assessment for FY twenty, in addition, just to kind of like pull them out of the red, and it's the assessment then going back to fourteen thousand dollars, there's no increase in the assessment for next year. That's question one. So I'll answer that.
Correct. So the assessment, actually, I believe, used to be sixteen thousand dollars, and had been lowered gradually over the last few years to fourteen thousand dollars, but for a variety of reasons, there was a deficit in FY twenty, and the board at Edco believed that if we were going to have future success in the organization, we needed to close FY twenty without a deficit. So we did vote the additional one-time twenty thousand dollar assessment, but that goes away and it goes back to fourteen thousand.
Okay. My other question was about programming, because at that meeting, you also had mentioned that, you know, while we're taking advantage of the McSweeney Center of Professional Learning as a school committee member, I have to say that was like, really, it was the closest and really only professional learning opportunity that I had, and I took every single advantage of those, those networking opportunities through the school committee roundtables. They really, really helped, helped me just connect with other people and connect with the issues and, and pushed me as a leader to develop myself and my, my, my leadership skills within the context of school committee. I really, really think that was really valuable, but you did say, like, we're not availing ourselves of, I mean, I've always admired collaboratives because they're, they're like little laboratories of innovation. There's all kinds of programming in the twi- there's twenty-five collaboratives statewide, and, and Edco has some really great programs, like their career pathways for kids eighteen to twenty-two who need additional support with the transitions. They have. who need additional support with the transitions. They have their partners program for students with autism that targets transition in high school, and their ABCD Center for Academic Behavior and Character Development. So those are just three out of the many programs. And I'm wondering, that, that one in particular is for kids in grade six through 12 who have been suspended for substance abuse with the goal of transitioning them back quickly into their, their settings. And so I'm just wondering, because you did say, we don't, we take, well, we take advantage of the McSweeney Center stuff and the professional learning stuff, not so much the programming. And like, why is that if we were paying the assessment and the programming? I can't believe that there's no need for the ABCD program or some of the other programming, programs. And I'm wondering if that can, like, why? And if, if, I, I'm sorry, I didn't email this to you. I just didn't have time to, I'm catching you with less, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is there any thought to increasing our participation, given that we're paying the assessment, and it's right there, and they do offer a tuition reduction for member districts?
Yeah, you know, so a lot of the programs you referred to are actually relatively new programs at Edco within the last year. And so for a district to participate, it has to kind of be the right student with the right profile at the right time who needs an out-of-district placement. With, you know, sometimes it's a case where we already have students in other out-of-district placements that might serve a similar niche where it would be better for the student to leave them where they're currently placed than to try and move them into an Edco program just for continuity. And at other times, you know, we do also have some 18 to 20-year-old programming in our district that's in direct competition with what Edco might do in some ways. And so it's looking at our own population too and thinking of some of our students, and where's the better fit? Is it our own programming or is it Edco? And, you know, most times, unless there's a really specific need, it's preferable from a student perspective to be able to look at programs in your own hometown and continue to be part of that school community. So it, it's kind of an overarching challenge that collaboratives have had in recent years too, as districts expand their own programming at schools, that, you know, A, what we're seeing in collaboratives is, you know, people are choosing to stay in their own districts. And then B, what we're seeing because of some of those declines in enrollment, there's a much more concentrated profile of student with higher needs going into collaboratives. It's something Case has experienced as well, so the profile of programs has shifted a little too. So it's kind of a nuanced and complicated answer. We are looking to expand our use of the Edco programs. For example, we're actually partnering with Edco this summer, and Edco is going to help us provide, you know, extended summer learning opportunities for some of the students that we want to provide additional learning for over the summer. They have an online program that they've been developing, and we are actually looking to have about, I think we're about 120 students, Deb, I think Deb just, Deb's still there. We're at about 120 students that we're going to be sending through their virtual program this summer from a K through, I think, eight, or K through five.
K through five. Students who are in K through five in 1920, so that would be now going into first through sixth grade.
Yeah. So we're really looking to, you know, ensure that the collaborative is strong. Just while I'm talking anyway, I'll just also insert a historical perspective that just a few years ago, Case was in a much more serious financial position, as very similar to Edco currently. And if you recall, I think I updated you during the budget process this year, but with good fiscal management, Case actually had to turn back additional reserves this year because they exceeded their reserve capacity as, you know, legally allowable under, you know, DESI guidance. So it is very possible, even, you know, within the short span of years, that with good leadership and good fiscal management, we can have a significant change in the status.
Adam?
Yeah, so thank you, Peter, for your participation in that, that committee, and then also giving us a very thorough report on it. I am inclined to continue our membership, and I'm also so inclined to reaffirm that with a vote. Because I think not only is it important for us to be members of this, I think it's important for us to actively commit to continuing the good work that Edco does.
Paul?
Well, I've been on the committee for nine years, and, and every year I hear nothing but good things coming out of Edco. So I also would be inclined to vote to reaffirm.
Angie?
Yeah, I'm also inclined to vote in, but with the financial situation, will the program be impacted for the next year?
No. No, they, they have, you know, a staffing model in place and to be able to offer all of their programs for next year. They are, no, they're, they're in a good place with programming.
Okay, thank you. Adam, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee reaffirm our commitment to the remaining members of the Edco Collaborative.
Second. Jenny's trying to beat him to the punch. There you go. All right. Is there any additional discussion, John?
Yeah, I would like to make a friendly amendment that we reaffirm that commitment, recognizing the value that Edco provides to our school community and to the Commonwealth.
I welcome that friendly amendment.
I'd second it.
Yeah, okay. So now, are we ready to vote on John's friendly amended by amendment? Okay, Angie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Okay. Adam?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Diane? Yes. Jenny?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
And me, yes. That is unanimous. Thank you all for the discussion.
We only voted the amendment. We still need to vote the motion.
Really?
Sadly, yes.
Okay. All right, so the amendment was accepted, and now we need to vote the actual one. All right. Angie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Diane? Yes. Jenny?
Yes.
Maya? Yes. Evelyn? Yes. Amy, yeah, all right. Good job. All right, up next, we have the weather update from our Gary favorite, Penny.
Thanks, Tessa. No slides tonight, just a brief oral update. FY20, we are still in the process of beginning to, beginning to close the accounts. No, no revelations since, since the last report two weeks ago. FY21, we're expecting next week we'll open FY21 in the accounting system so people can start placing orders. They'll be held until, until we have an actual budget, but it's, it's a process that needs to begin so that people who have short amounts of time from now till the end of the year can place their orders in the system. Part of the task of reopening, part of the task, I'm sorry, of the reopening team that I'm on with Marie, it's the resources reopening team, will be to agree on guidelines as to what information, what guidance we give to the administrators as far as what's appropriate to purchase for next year. The thought being, are we going to be live? Are we going to be remote? Or the default right now is we'll be somewhere in between. As far as the big picture for next year, I don't expect any state budget guidance until next month. That's been, that's been pretty consistently reported for some time now that the state is not ready. But lastly, just to give you, again, and I think I've said this before, but with respect to the federal grant programs that the district will be the beneficiary of, there's guidance trickling out, but there's a clear order in which we need to access the various funds that are identified at this point. So we're going to be preparing a submittal for the FEMA grant, which is basically COVID-related health and safety expenditures. The ESSER funds that we used, we identified as a source of funds in the FY21 budget and reduced the, reduced our appropriation accordingly. We're going to be taking, applying for that as well. The deadline for the, for the application is the end of this month. And finally, the CARES Act, and that's where the significant money, at least in comparison to the other two sources, appears to be. And just to say, Peter and Marie and I had a preliminary discussion with the town managers of both Acton and Boxboro. They're developing plans for use of the monies that have been allocated to the town. The CARES Act funds are allocated to cities and towns, not to regional school districts. So that discussion was to remind them of that fact and to tell them that we believe that we'll have eligible costs that hopefully they'll consider putting on, putting on their request for, for CARES Act funds. And that's that.
All right, John?
In, in terms of the, the state budget, you know, one of the things that won't happen until July is, you know, the state won't realize the revenues associated with the, the tax filing. Do you think it's reasonable to expect that the state will actually wait until that data comes in to make some decisions about directionally where the budget's going?
Is it reasonable? That, that's the only way I can answer that, John, is yeah, that sounds reasonable. But as far as the actual, what are they doing? I, I do not know.
All right. No other questions? I think that we can move on. If that was, if that's all there is, you all said?
Yes, thank you.
Item 5.4, it's up to me, subcommittee and member report. We have school building committee update. You're muted. You're muted.
Yep, just had to unmute. So the school building committee, you know, we are being, soon to be drilling our first test wells for the geothermal system of the building. That is the first real activity. We are also beginning to gear up and demolish classrooms on the Gates site, on those two classrooms side of the school that need to come down for the enabling work. And then we'll be starting to see construction fencing going up over the summer and preparing the site for future work. The, you will also notice, I believe, if you all have now received the first in our series of updates that we're going to be providing, our project manager will be developing weekly updates that go out to the mail list that we've been developing for the building project over the course of time. We have added all of your email addresses for you to that mail list so that we can flood your inbox with information about the building project. But in all actuality, those email updates from Skansy have been fantastic, so we're looking forward to keeping everyone in the loop. If there's anyone listening to the meeting that wants those updates, they can go right on the building project page of our website, and there is a link to sign up for additional updates. So if you have beauty members asking how they can get more of a process, please steer them to our website and the building project page, and, you know, they can get all the information they want. There is an action item before you with regard to the building project. If you remember earlier this school year, you voted something from MSBA called the Project Scope and Budget Agreement. That agreement was the agreement between MSBA and the district as to how much their eligible grant would actually be. There is another document before you tonight for your vote and approval, which is the project funding agreement for the Douglas Gates Elementary School project. This is a standard form template from the MSBA. The attorney will also have to send in the certification as soon as you vote to approve it. You are not required to approve it only if you want to receive money from MSBA. So, you know, if you want their money, this is the language of the vote. Otherwise, feel free to do what you want.
Okay. Adam?
I really want to move this vote because it's one of the few building-related votes that doesn't have a lot of numbers in it. So I move to approve the project funding agreement for the Douglas Gates Elementary School project.
I really want to second this.
Come on, Jason. Come on.
Does it, Peter, does it need to be the exact language that, that we found Mike?
Is voting to approve. Adam nailed it.
Okay, great. So if there is no discussion, then we move on. Angie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Diane? Yes.
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
And me? Yes. All right, and that is approved unanimously. Included in your packet are the minutes of that meeting. Beth told me that was not exactly the motion. Is that what Beth said? Well, Peter says it was okay, so. I got to go with, I said Beth texted me that that was not the exact motion. That was not exactly the motion.
I thought I heard Adam say move to approve the project funding agreement for the Douglas Gates Elementary School project.
The language in my thing says move that the Acton-Boxboro Regional School Committee approve the project funding agreement as issued by the MSBA, authorized the superintendent of course to execute the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
I don't know. I'm just going with what Beth texted me. She's the one who said, I don't know. All right, so we'll vote again. Evelyn?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Diane? Yes. John?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Maya? And me, yeah. Okay, that was approved unanimously. ALG, does anyone have, Diane, you're on my. Yeah, I was at the meeting, so the Acton Leadership Group met this morning. They spoke about town meeting, just FYI. Acton is planning for normal attendance, which is like 350, 400 people, taking the following precautions, and of course, top priority is safety. They're limiting the number of warrant articles to 20 instead of 30. They're looking at overflow rooms and possibly even outdoor seating, weather permitting, and had a limit discussion by moderator oversight, you know, encouraging concision when speaking, avoiding repeating what others have said, and adding some background information into the warrant that kind of cue people to the, the cost savings realized for certain initiatives like the Kelly's Corner land acquisition. They also talked about the fiscal year 20 update, which basically Dave just gave us on the school side. On the town side, the CARES Act money has been going to local aid programs here in Acton for small struggling businesses and rental assistance and, and things like that. So the other big thing that I wanted to just say out loud here in school committee is that we always talk about the spreadsheet, which is a financial model that looks like three to five years out for the town and the schools in Acton. And it's a feat to, to manage that, and Marie Altieri and Steve Barrett, the finance director for the town of Acton, manage that process. So the big idea here is for school committee is that we, as we head into a new budget cycle this fall, I mean, we're about to go to town meeting in a few weeks for the FY21 budget, but as we head into the FY, thinking about FY22, it's really important to keep in mind that there, there will likely be huge deficits in FY22, and the directive is to tighten as much as we can, expect to use reserves and to have a plan. So I just want to put that in everybody's head now really early. It's probably something you're going to hear a lot more, but we, it came on strong, came across very strong from, from the Acton FinCom, especially at today's ALG meeting, so I wanted to pass that along as well. Okay. Is there an additional FinCom update? Oh, yeah, Peter, I know you wanted to share something. I've been in town, right?
Yeah, this will be very quick. I attended the last Acton Finance Committee meeting, and they did vote unanimously, although with one abstention to support the revised school department budget that we submitted.
Budget subcommittee has my name on it. I think that Dave largely covered most of what we talked about in budget hub. We spoke briefly about, about the presentations at the town meetings. John's has been working diligently on the slides and waiting for me to respond with my thoughts on them. And we, we, we talked just a bit about, you know, the, the purpose of, of the. um, you know, the, the purpose of, of the, um, presentation that town meeting this year and shortening them to really get to the heart of what we're doing as a district to respond to president's team and, and what we were doing at that point. John, did you want to add anything to that?
Um, I, I, I think, you know, the important thing is what Diane mentioned earlier, you know, and what everybody now understands. Town meeting is going to be really abbreviated. Um, and I think the message that should go out to people is, you know, we did do all the work that we normally do to build this budget. Then we made some changes at the end in response to COVID nineteen, but the hard work is next fall, you know, when we really get more data about what the landscape is likely to look like. And that's, you know, where we will see, um, you know, big effort in the budget. So I'd encourage everybody that feels, you know, maybe a little bit disenfranchised because there won't be much discussion at town meeting, um, to come to school committees in the fall and, you know, to everybody to just, you know, make sure we talk to the community about what we're gonna do.
Um, John, you wanted to continue on and give your H I P. update?
[inaudible]
Oh, sure, Ginnie, sorry. All right, you're frozen.
So, John, you were, so you went to pre-record your whole, um, talk about the budget so that people can do it online before town meeting? Is that correct?
That's one of the things that's been discussed, whether that's actually gonna happen. I think we're still a little bit murky, but, um, if we have an opportunity to put out some additional information, either in that form or some other form, or, you know, as we're trying to pull together our information for the warrant, you know, everything other than town meeting floor, we should try and, you know, give a little bit of extra where we can.
No, I completely agree. I think, I think the idea of putting forth the whole budget presentation online before the meeting is, would be really great and then allow for the discussion on the floor.
John, you want to give your H I P. update?
The Acton Health Insurance Trust met May twenty-eighth. Expenses through ten months were fourteen eight point eight million dollars against income of thirteen point six million dollars for a loss of one point two million dollars, not including expected reinsurance recoveries of zero point two three million dollars. April showed a favorable variance of two hundred and nine thousand dollars related to reduction in services for members, including elective procedures. This favorability is expected for May and June with a revised expectation that the trust will lose between a half a million and one million dollars in FY twenty. Uh, the unrestricted assets of the trust are expected to be about five million dollars at year end, which is equivalent to about twenty-five percent of annual expenses. The trustees discussed the merits of establishing a policy to govern the level of the trust unrestricted assets and a policy to govern investment in trust assets. Members were generally supportive of establishing formal policies. Uh, members are doing research, which will be reviewed in the future meeting.
Great. Thank you, John. Okay. Um, up next is item spec, the recommendation to accept an anonymous donation of personal coverage material to the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District. Peter, did you have anything you wanted to say about that or?
No, very briefly. We had a community member, um, who very generously wanted to donate, um, you know, several thousand, um, face masks to us, uh, for use. Uh, we, you know, received them and, you know, are distributing those at just about any available venue. I think Marie brought some over to the election the other day. You know, we certainly want to make them available at town meeting. Uh, this is more to give out to the community than necessarily as a stockpile for us as a district. And the person also made a donation to the town of Boxborough as well.
I was gonna say, I think this Saturday, I don't know that, that is, is that related? This Saturday, they're, they're planning a gando of masks. I, I saw the Facebook update. Yeah, Marie, go ahead.
Add to that, Tessa?
Yep.
Um, so yes, we received twelve thousand masks and Fox, the town of Boxborough received five thousand with a commitment to more. And the goal is to give masks to every household in Acton and Boxborough. And, um, it's a very generous donation. We're not the only communities involved. Jamie Eldredge was involved in, in making this happen. But this Saturday, so the goal is to distribute them to every household. We, we've gone through, um, all the food security channels. So Community Supper put the, gave them out, our lunch program gave them out, um, Open Table, Food Pantry, et cetera. But this Saturday, any Acton or Boxborough citizen is welcome to go and drive through the Boxborough Regency Hotel and they will be given free masks for each member of their household, nine to twelve AM. So please try to make it.
Excellent. So is there, um, a motion to make that a generous gift? Move to approve with gratitude.
Second.
John?
Yes.
Ginnie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Ginnie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
And myself, yeah. Great. Thank you so much for that. Thank you for the additional info, Marie. That, um, is wonderful. We have, um, warrants to approve tonight. You received, um, an email with a file for the use of, with all the files in it. So you could look at them. They were technically approved at the, by the warrant subcommittee. I, I will, I, I'll read it. I'll save you, Adam, from the numbers tonight. I move that this local lady vote to approve payroll warrant as follows, number P two zero two four dated five twenty-one twenty in the amount of two million seven hundred ninety thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars eighty-nine cents. Payroll deduction warrant as follows, number twenty dash zero two four PR dated five twenty-one twenty in the amount of one million one hundred twenty-seven thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars and one cent. Vendor warrant as follows, number twenty dash zero two four dated five twenty-eight twenty in the amount of one million five hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second.
And now we will do our roll call again. Isn't it fun? All right, John?
Yes.
Ginnie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Ginnie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Ginnie, yes. So that brings us to the last thing on our thing. FYI, Peter, is there anything that you would like to highlight that is being in the FYI?
No, you can, well, ye- yes. Um, you can just take a look at the mask bar and language, uh, poster contest. Uh, one of our students was highlighted in that statewide contest and we included the winning artwork picture of it for you. So, and then congratulations to our graduates.
Awesome. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
You know what, before the motion to adjourn, I wanted to note that in the Q and A meeting was what, Dr. Aksham was, was, um, watching and he said, dear Acton-Boxborough School Committee and Superintendent Light, thank you for your support and appreciation for our collaborative efforts towards our
Move to adjourn.
Second. All right. John?
Yes.
Ginnie?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes, and I just want to add one sentence. I just remembered today is June fourth, is the TMN squared date. So never, you know, the pursuit of liberty and justice is never end. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Nora?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Ginnie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
And myself, yeah. All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for all of your hard work. Uh, remember, you have to send me your superintendent evaluation by tomorrow.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.